This is John, you remember him? Okay. I hope you know about John. You do? Okay. The rest of them I'm unfamiliar with. John's here.
Good to have you. Yes, sir. Home town. Did you live here?
Six years.
You see me from here?
Sorry. Sorry for the background noise. You don't know where I come from?
That's right. I'm in North Carolina. I've been here a couple hundred years. So I did say follow the land. Follow the history of the world. Yeah, fuck it. It was the only route there to a children's picture. I tried home and I just couldn't get in and all that. Buried there. I didn't see anything. It's just around the old river. Whatever's in the packet is what it is.
I think I put there one year. I forget where else.
Yeah. It's a whole disaster. Have a good one. I was just wondering if you wanted to order all this from my house today? I'll see what you're doing.
Do you have a gentleman? Yes. Hey, man, what's up? Get you one now? Thank you, sir.
Hello, Chris. You're getting up and talking, aren't you? Couple times. We're out for you.
John, good evening. No more not to say. Coming here with your office. What is going on? Thank you. There's a gentleman. Good morning. Okay. You guys good? You're good? Sarah, so that's who you're talking to. Okay, perfect. Perfect. You good?
I don't know if I'm good, but I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man. Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
Okay.
Oh, I'm in a wreck. You won't find the one that covered it. I actually knew that too. No, I really don't have scars. I had things that were white. Oh, I'm overblown. I just got a new t-shirt. It's a picture of the old way out. It is well. This one's at home. Yeah.
I started off. Where is the beautiful town?
That's the intersection. The intersection. They're on C. I'll be soon.
I'm glad you're here. I'm nervous.
I just got a new t-shirt. It's a picture of the old way out. It's just well. This one's at home. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt?
Oh, I'm in a wreck. You won't find the one that covered it. I actually knew that too. No, I really don't have scars. I had things that were white. Oh, I'm overblown. I just got a new t-shirt. It's a picture of the old way out. It's just well. This one's at home. I'll switch.
Where is the beautiful town?
That's the intersection. The intersection. They're on C. I'll be soon. I didn't see anything. I tried home and I just couldn't get in and all that. Buried there. I didn't see anything. It's just well. This one's at home. I'll switch.
Where is the beautiful town?
That's the intersection. The intersection. They're on C. I'll be soon. I didn't see anything. I didn't see anything. I'm walking. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man. Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good.
Oh, I'm in a wreck. You won't find the one that covered it. I actually knew that too. I really don't have scars. I had things that were white. Oh, I'm overblown. I just got a new t-shirt. It's a picture of the old way out. It's just well. This one's at home. I'll switch.
Where is the beautiful town?
That's the intersection. The intersection. They're on C. I'll be soon. I didn't see anything. I didn't see anything. I'm walking. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man. Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
Where is the beautiful town?
That's the intersection. The intersection. They're on C. I'll be soon. I didn't see anything. I didn't see anything. I'm walking. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man. Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
Where is the beautiful town?
That's the intersection. The intersection. They're on C. I'll be soon. I didn't see anything. I didn't see anything.
I'm walking. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good. I want to be. I ain't like chicken good to the bone. Sir, can we just a little bit of the art? It's not like that. He'll be the one to watch, baby, he is. Oh, man.
Wasn't very good. I've got the guy that's um far away some. I'll switch.
You got a beautiful shirt? Okay. All this work is done. I'm sure you're all good.
My 11th year, actually January 2012, my 11th year with the organization. And I appreciate the ongoing support of your city. And I appreciate you representing on the board Regina, who's been there. She's been very engaged, asked a lot of good questions, and so I'm glad to be with you today. I did give you a hand, I'll mention that a little bit later on, but wanted to go through some slides to talk about where we are. We are reaching a very important tenure of where we've been, and we've been working for over 10 years now to evaluate Falls Lake and to come up with recommendations for a new and revised strategy. So as you can see, when it rains a lot in this watershed, there's a lot of water that comes down. Hard to manage all of that water, and it has an impact on the lake. You are a member of the UNRBA, which includes six counties, seven municipalities, and the South Graham Water and Sewer Authority, as well as the Soil and Water Conservation Districts. This organization has been in place since the mid-nineties, so I think '95 or '96 is when the organization formed. Obviously, the Falls Lake Reservoir was a controversial project. I worked for the state of North Carolina between 1976 and 2005, and one of my first projects here in Raleigh was working on the Falls Lake before it was ever constructed. And we indicated that it might be a problem when it was constructed. But they went forward and constructed the reservoir. Thankfully, the city of Raleigh is very thankful for it, because without it, it wouldn't have a water supply. It would be very difficult for the city to support itself without this particular water supply. But it has been a great resource for the community, much, much better water quality than we predicted. Just goes to show, we're sort of like weather forecasters, we don't always get it right. So they didn't get it right that there was going to be unacceptable conditions in this lake, and that's good for everybody. So the regulatory framework that came up in 2008, the General Assembly passed a bill that said rules for the Falls Lake watershed for controlling nutrients would be passed by 2010. They modified that to 2011. Those rules were put in place in 2011. They are the most restrictive and stringent rules in the state of North Carolina, some of the most stringent rules in the country. And they required, they were broken down into two stages. City of Creedmoor participated with other members in the watershed, and was what was called the consensus principles. Those consensus principles were a list of recommendations by the people in the watershed for how the rules should work. And one of the things they put in the rules was what we call an adaptive management provision. Stage one was agreed to by all of the organizations, but stage two, which has the most excessive cost, that was, they put in place an allowance for an organization or person to do a study on the lake to help guide that. That's what the UNRBA has been doing for the last 10 years. The overall cost of these rules estimated to be $1.5 billion. In a watershed that has less than 300,000 people in it, that is a very high cost. Even under EPA guidelines, those are very high costs. Stage two requirements, as laid out in the rules, are beyond technology, cannot be done. We also believe that, based on our research and work, that the quality of the reservoir is sufficient to protect the uses. We do think the reservoir and the watershed need to be managed, so that's something we're going to continue to do. Stage one has been fully implemented. All of the jurisdictions, including the city of Creedmoor, have implemented new development rules. New development rules require that all property that is developed in this watershed has disturbed area more than a half acre will have to meet reductions in nutrients after the project is completed. This is called post-construction requirements. After the project is finished, they will put in best management practices or treatment systems to take care of the stormwater running off the site with the objective of not increasing nutrients for any development in the watershed. And this has been applied throughout the watershed, from the top to the bottom. Every jurisdiction has implemented that. Agriculture has been monitoring their progress. They've been installing best management practices. They've been using no-till practices for row cropping. They have managed their fertilizer applications, and they have met their requirements. I will also note that this watershed is changing. This watershed has changed from 2006 dramatically relative to agriculture. Row crop and other production, like pasture, has dropped by 44%. In other words, there's only, there's 44% less land in this watershed that's under cultivation for some kind of agricultural activity. So that's an extremely important thing. The wastewater treatment plants have all installed advanced nutrient removal technology. The South Graham Water and Sewer Authority has done that. You all are paying for that. It was an expensive set of projects, and they are exceeding that. City of Durham and the town of Hillsborough has also done those things. Existing development, existing development is the most difficult thing. This is the first, this is the first watershed in North Carolina to implement rules to try to roll back the impact of existing development. Every piece of land that was developed and in existence in 2006 is supposed to reduce the nutrient impact by 40% nitrogen and 77% phosphorus. That's what the rules require. That means if you have a development that was developed in 1975, that stormwater requirements weren't required then. So in order to offset that by 40 and 77%, you'd have to retrofit that site. You'd have to collect the stormwater within treatment. That's extremely expensive, and it's logistically difficult to do, because no area was provided for that. So we had come up with a management approach for existing development in the first stage, and that was to offset the impact of development that occurred between 2006 and 2012. And that's called the interim alternative implementation approach. And that's an investment-based approach, where people in the watershed jurisdictions invest money in projects to improve the watershed, to improve water quality, to reduce nutrients going in. That is an innovative and new approach. The state of North Carolina approved that, and the Environmental Management Commission approved that as well. So tracking compliance for what's called the IAIA, which is a mouthful, the interim alternative implementation approach, the investment-based approach, all of the jurisdictions in this watershed, including Creedmoor, have committed to put in at least $1.5, as a total, $1.5 million every year for the next five years to install projects that are going to reduce the impact of nutrients in this watershed. That, we're in the, we just completed the second year of that. So at the end of June of this year, the second year was completed. The reports for that will be due in September and October of this year. But most, one of the things that has been amazing about it is that all of our jurisdictions have identified over $5.5 million in projects. A lot of those are land conservation. We think land conservation is a great thing to do. We think it is a way to prevent the watershed from increasing in nutrients, and it also provides open space, and it is volunteer. We're not taking anybody's land, we're not forcing anybody to set their land aside. They volunteer for that. And in most cases, they get paid for that land. They get paid for the easements, or they get paid for the land itself. So it is a good way, I think, to approach projects that will help the quality of this watershed. We call this watershed health. Like everything else, you know, it's like your body. The things that you go into your body, that's what causes your body to have trouble. I put too many bad things in my body. I eat too much fatty food. So you don't want to have too many bad things going on in the watershed, because that causes problems with the water that's flowing out. So we're working to put in good things, and that's been, I think, very effective. UNRBA's approach to this evaluation of stage two, this is the reexamination effort. This is the 10 years of monitoring and modeling we've been doing. It's a science-based effort. This organization, you as a contributor, has put in over 10, will have put in over $10 million of it. This is an unprecedented level of investment in trying to determine what is the best thing to do. What is the most scientifically sound? What is the most reasonable? What is the most cost-effective? What is the, what is the best thing we can do to protect this, this lake? You know, because this lake is a resource, not only for the city of Raleigh, but for the whole community. And there's a lot of fishing tournaments, and a lot of people recreating on it. It is a, it is a resource. We have gone through this with a science-based approach. We've had quality assurance project plans for those, meaning we've made sure that we've done all the right things in accordance with good science. The state of North Carolina's approved it, and we have been conducting that. This year will be the culmination, that we'll be making our recommendations to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, to the Environmental Management Commission, and to the General Assembly. And we will be working to provide a collaborative approach to a new management strategy. We believe that we have some excellent ideas on how to do this effectively, and to make sure that we do protect this lake and this watershed. So one of the key findings of this is really, this watershed is always considered to be a developed watershed. You know, people drive through the city of Durham, and they say, "Well, this is what, this is what the whole watershed looks like." That's not the way that it is. Watershed is approximately 60% forested. You know, people believe that the watershed's developed, and if you look at that chart up there, that part which is actually urban is only 13%. And really, the 13% is not really heavily dense development. It usually has a lot of open space in it. It is developed, but it isn't completely covered with asphalt and rooftops. And so we have found, in studying this watershed and getting all the data that we have, we've given a really good balance of what's in this watershed. And so when you look at it and you evaluate, 75% of this watershed is in an unmanaged state. I mean, that's forest land, it's fallow land, scrub land, wetlands, surface waters in the lake, at the lake and other southern pellets, there's other lakes in this watershed. So we have very little ability to change this watershed. You can't, you can't require people who own forests to reduce the nutrients from it. It wouldn't be, it's not a regulatory, something that you can do. We've had, our jurisdictions in the watershed have done over 350 projects to reduce the impact from existing development in there. And we found our wastewater treatment plants have reduced their total nitrogen loads by 38% and their total phosphorus loads by 81%. That's been in the, that's been in the last 10 years that that's happened. That's a tremendous amount of reduction. The soils in this watershed do store and cycle nutrients. The sediments in the bottom of the lake store and recycle nutrients. So you're trying to wag the dog with the tail. You can't control significantly the amount of nutrients going to this lake by retrofitting land. Even if you could retrofit all of it, you couldn't meet 40%, you couldn't meet 77% of phosphorus at all. It's completely beyond capability. So we've had, we've began the process of pulling together our ideas. We've been talking with the Board of Directors. We've been talking with our Past Forward Committee, which is the steering committee for the UNRBA, made up of staff members of the jurisdictions who are very well-informed. And if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be able to do all the things that we do. So we appreciate our jurisdictions providing support through their staff. We have been looking at ways we can move forward without being a tremendous burden on this watershed. And so we've come up with some basic ideas. We want to improve water quality, and we want to protect the uses. The lake's meeting its uses. It's a water supply, it's a recreational facility, it's an ecological system, it is meeting the requirements and the uses for that lake as it was designated. It's a flood control. If you remember, the Corps of Engineers designed this originally for flood control. They didn't design it for water quality, they didn't design it for fishing, they didn't even design it for water supply. They designed it for flood control. The people that have Kenstone want their land protected. And so this is a big part of what they do, but it's meeting all of those uses. And we want to acknowledge the realities of this system, as I've outlined them. What can we do? What is reasonable? We can't, we can't make this watershed into something it can never be. It is already 60% wooded. How can we make it even more protected? Well, preserving land would be good, because that land is privately held, it couldn't be developed. And even though we have new development rules, if this watershed develops, you can be sure that the nutrients will increase, even if it's the best we can do if you develop this watershed. We want to do an adaptive program, something that we've changed. We don't want to set this and forget it. It's not like a washing machine. You want to be able to look at it, you want to go back and evaluate it, and we think that's going to be a part of it. We want to build on the IAIA investment. Everybody, all of local governments in this, and I've worked with local governments all my career, I worked with the Department of Environmental Quality, for almost 30 years, and I was a regional supervisor for implementing water quality. And I've worked with a lot of local governments. Local governments are the backbone of what happens in the state. It's not the regulatory agencies that make things happen, it's the local governments. It's the people that run the wastewater plants, that run the planning programs, that do the project reviews, and put in these new development requirements. Those are the people there. So we want to be able to use our local governments and cooperatively come up with a way to be adaptive as we move into the future. We need to look at it and check on what we're doing. We want to encourage a fair and equitable program. We want to make sure that each of the jurisdictions invest based on their impact to the watershed, not have it equal across, but have it based on the people that benefit the most from it, and that have the most area and land in the watershed. We want to expand partnerships and opportunities. Right now, agriculture is a separate portion of, and we've been talking to the agricultural community about coming in and providing some opportunities for other investment options. Also DOT, we've been talking with DOT, they've been investing in the watershed, but they're not always satisfied that what they're doing is the best thing. So if they come to the table with the people in the watershed, the jurisdictions, we can do, I think, better projects and do that. And we want to look at sustainability and energy reductions in the future. We know that things are changing. Storms are being more intense, temperatures are going up, we're having much more changes in our climate in this, in this state. And that's having an impact on water, having an impact on runoff. Nutrient reduction opportunities on existing lands, look at streams and wetlands, flood plant expansion. We want to do wastewater treatment activities. We've already done one. There's not, you know, wastewater treatment has now shrunk to the point that it's less than 8% of the total nitrogen in the watershed. So there's not a lot more we can do for wastewater treatment plants. We don't want to add a tremendous amount of cost with little return. You could spend another, you know, same amount that you spent to this point and only get 2% or 3% reduction in the watershed. It doesn't make any sense, so we need to make sure that that's something that we're looking at. We've actually seen a reduction in air emissions because of Clean Air Act changes. There's been a 20% reduction in nitrogen deposition since 2006 in this watershed. That may continue, because we are moving away from fossil fuels, NOx emissions are going to go down, so nitrogen is going to continue to do that. New development, we have to continue to require new development requirements as we move through this process. We want to make sure that we align with local growth and sustainability goals. We want to make sure that we're consistent with the planning for each one of our jurisdictions. You all have a lot of things that you're looking at, just as the other jurisdictions are. You're having to balance those things, so I think that's very important for us to do that. And as I said, watershed health, to make sure we have a clean, abundant source of water supply in the watershed, you know, even though South Graham Water and Sewer Authority doesn't get their water from Falls Lake, they get their water from the watershed. So projects done in the watershed will benefit South Graham Water, will benefit the city of Durham, will benefit Hillsborough, it'll benefit all those that have those in there. We want to take the IAIA pilot program, and we want to expand that and make that more effective. The next steps that we have, one of the reasons that I'm here today is that because we're coming in December, we need your support, we need your help. The consensus principles that were developed back in 2010, we need to update those. We need consensus principles too. And we want all of our jurisdictions to sign off on that. These are the principles that we'll be using, and we'll have a set of probably four pages of listed things that we think needs to be a part of the new, of the new rules. We're going to bring that back to the UNRBA Board in September. We're working on that right now. The handout that I gave on the back of it, on the second page down at the bottom, there is a draft of the Principles and Concepts document. That's a detailed document that describes, it's down at the bottom, and it says, it gives you the URL or the web location for UNRBA.org/reexamination. You can pull up that document. We're in the process of reviewing it. We will be reviewing it between now and September. In the September board meeting of the UNRBA, we will bring a final version of that. We'll also bring a new set of consensus principles. We'll look for the UNRBA Board to approve that, and then we're going to bring that back to all of our jurisdictions. Between September and the November meeting of the UNRBA Board, we would like for all of our jurisdictions to endorse those consensus principles. We'll probably have, we'll draft up a proposed resolution for each of the governing boards to say, "This is what we think needs to go forward." Now remember, these will not be detailed. They will not say what the rules, the new rules need to look like. They will say, "These are the principles we think need to be included in the new rules," which will include things like, "We want an investment-based program." "We want to continue to provide for new development requirements." These will be general recommendations and not specific. And then in November, the UNRBA Board would approve the entire package, and then we would submit that to the state in December. You've probably heard about the North Carolina Collaboratory that was created by the legislature in 2016, it was updated in 2018. They studied Jordan Reservoir. They're just, this year, completing their study of Falls Lake. We have been working in conjunction with them, they'll be putting their recommendations in in December as well. So I'm here today to give you a general outline of what we're doing, the things we're going to be recommended, the things we're going to be focused on, so that I can come back, so that it can be brought back to you. I won't necessarily have to be there for that, but we will have a set of consensus principles to bring to this commission in sometime after the September meeting of the UNRBA Board. So that's, that's a brief summary. This handout is a very, what I would call, general overview of what we've been doing, the amount of money we've invested, where we've been going, some of the ideas that we have, and just lays out kind of what the UNRBA's been doing. So with that, that's a review of where we are and where we're going.[1360.26] So with that, that's, that's a review of where we are and where we're going, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Westphal, thank you so much for your presentation. I'll entertain any questions. Commissioner Wilkins, any questions? Mr. Way, any questions to comment?
No, sir. Thank you for your time. Excellent presentation.
Mr. Gleason?
No, sir, but thanks for the presentation.
And Commissioner Kaczynski, since you attend their meetings, I saved you for last.
Thank you. Marcia, you forgot to tell us about Falls Lake.
Falls Lake? Yeah, I know.
Like, that's the big news!
That's right, that's right. Big water, body of water.
The best, the best lake in the United States? Is that what it was?
Yeah, I wouldn't say that, but it's a good lake. It's a good lake.
Thank you so much for coming and the presentation.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Westphal, thank you so much for being here, and we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we move on to item 5D. Mr. Randy Lanu, representing Mule Town Depot, requests to address the board.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I thought about what Chad said when he came up, and said you all pretty much know me, and I think you all know me, so I'll keep this super short, but my wife and I own a building here in Creedmore. She runs a successful business on Main Street, and Lori and I, that's my spouse, and I recently bought with two other people the Historic Train Depot that sits on about one and a quarter acres, stone's throw away from here. And we also, for more than 20 years now, live just outside of town on Porchwood Road. We are ready to make an investment in planning the development of Mule Town Depot, and we're hesitant to do so because we may invest tens of thousands of dollars to create the zoning permit at the middle and find that when the middle is approved. The water and sewer allocation is not available until a sewer infrastructure project that's pending or is completed, and that project will likely be years in the making, and our zoning permit approval would expire in that time. The idea being that we don't put all the money into planning the project, and we don't make that investment, with the very real possibility that that investment would just vaporize because our development approval would expire while we're waiting for sewer and water allocation to happen, to be out there. And so what we're asking for is a tax amendment that extends zoning permit approval until one year after water and sewer allocation availability, and the tax amendment gives the people of Creedmore a zero cost to the taxpayers mechanism to encourage investment in our town. That's why I'm here tonight. I have suggested language to get this done, or mechanism to get this done, and what you have on your desk is actually suggested language in the context of your current, excuse me, of your, your current ordinance that would, I think, accomplish the goal that I'm trying to set here. And I just will ask your forgiveness on this. This is not what I do every day. I do not write tax amendments, so this is just sort of a layperson's attempt to make this work. Thanks for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Way, any questions?
Mr. Lanu, I'm not a subject matter expert on this type of stuff. We have staff that handle this type of thing. Mr. Frangos handles it. I mean, I see in your email here, you know, basically, you're surprised or frustrated by the lack of action and direction from the commissioners. If it's, if stuff's not brought to our specific attention, we can't act on it. And I'm not a subject matter expert on this type of amendment or changes to it. That's something in Mr. Frangos's wheelhouse because he handles that type of activity for our area.
I mean, I'm happy to talk about what I sent in the email. I was trying to focus on the update, but I, the process started in January, and this commission, it's in your minutes from your February meeting, directed the staff to draft this amendment for your review. And the reason that I'm involved with, or why I actually sat down and tried to write it, is because every several weeks or so, I would send an email to the staff saying, hey, what's the time status on that? I understand that you all directed the staff to write this at that time, and I didn't see a commitment there at all, and in a couple emails, not only was there no time commitment, it was like, we're not sure we're going to do this at all. And so, I mean, that's the reason I'm standing in front of you tonight, and I, I understand that you all are not a subject matter expert on this. I'm trying to motivate something that's now seven months down the line, where we could have been well into planning the project already. But I, I'm not here because of sour grapes. I'm here because I want to get this done.
Right, I understand. I'm just trying to wrap my head around what changes this implements down the road for anyone else.
The way I tried to write it, and I get that, it makes sense to me, the way I tried to write it is specifically related to the very unusual situation that Creedmore's in right now, which is that you have an extremely limited sewer and water allocation. So this, as far as I'm concerned, this would be done as soon as the sewer and water allocation is available. And this would be, this has been an often discussed thing, but this would be available to any investor, not just me and my partners. This is not a special entitlement we're setting up for.
Mr. City Attorney.
The proposal that Mr. Lanu has made, I think we talked about it before, is certainly reasonable. However, and we talked about business impact as well, this section 7.5-9 is only one of a dozen or more permit validity sections in the CDO. You, keep in mind, the development process is not a simple linear one where you come in, you hand-pipe a set of drawings, you sand some, and everything else is done. It's a successive, it's a, it's a, you know, a whole bunch of hoops that a developer has to jump through a property. You get one permit, you got to come back for more, you got to get other approvals, all of which we have to review to determine what sort of impact would extending perhaps the permit validity for one section of the CDO will have on the rest of the process. And I think if there are questions about whether that's worthwhile, when we already have provisions in the CDO, conditional zoning, development agreements, you know, I had just two examples, that would allow a developer to bring to you a proposal that would include a specific suggestion, you know, a specific request with respect to the validity of that particular project without impacting the rest of the ordinance in a way that we might have to go back and unwind in 2028 when Sigwassa has made water and sewer available, and we've got to go back and readjust all of this permit validity stuff that we've changed now to address the problem that there already seems to be perhaps a more narrow solution to. And I think I've expressed that to Mr. Lanu a few times, that we think, we are working on, and Mike and I have picked around, some language, but we keep running into that problem, that, you know, how many different sections of the CDO do we have to change? And if we change those, what is the impact on the city, you know, 10 years from now, especially in light of the fact that, you know, conditional zoning is now an option in Creedmore for development agreements?
So my question would be, what's the best way we can work with Mr. Lanu to get this process forward?
Like I suggested, I think that probably the simplest way would be for Mr. Lanu to propose a conditional zoning for the parcel, or to prepare a development agreement and propose it to you. Both of those processes are essentially a negotiation between this board and Mr. Lanu. You have the opportunity, he could present to you what he thinks is most reasonable and what accomplishes his goals and objectives. You all then have an opportunity to review that and discuss it, to try to, you know, look down the line and figure out what sort of impacts that would have on the city. And then if you can come up with your counteroffer proposal, if it's a conditional zoning, then we draft up, you know, conditions that we can attach to that approval. If it's a development agreement, then we draft a development agreement that encompasses all of those negotiated terms, and we don't have to touch the CDO. We don't have to change anything that, that might have unintended consequences down the line. And that has been my recommendation since, you know, March or February this year.
May I speak?
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, literally more than a year ago, Michael and I had some discussions about what a development agreement is, and when it's appropriate to accept that development agreement and what have you, and it didn't seem like it was a good option at the time. And so my, my concern here is that it's a cart before the horse problem. How much planning do we need to do before we can form a development agreement where you guys actually know what we're planning on doing? And it also doesn't solve the problem of this being equal opportunity for everybody that's out there. I'd love to know what the other sections are that relate to permit validity. This is the only section, indeed, it's called permit validity, in the, in the ordinance. And so I don't know, to be completely fair, what the rest of the complications might be relative to, say, approvals with Sigwassa, but I, but I, my concern is that we're going around in circles and overcomplicating it when some very simple language might solve this problem for a couple of years, and it might solve it for everybody that wants to invest in Creedmore. I'm just encouraging you all not to make it more complicated than it is, and allow the cart to go before the horse, or the horse before the cart, I should say.
Question, Kevin, doesn't this require a site plan? And if so, do we have one?
As far as I'm aware, no, no site plan has been prepared for this project. And I think that that's part of what has prompted Mr. Lanu to come to the city in the first place, right? He's concerned about, and I think just finally, concerned about the impact that it will have on him and his project moving forward, if he is required to invest the time and the money and prepare a site plan and everything that goes with that, to submit to the city if there's a possibility that even if that site plan is approved, the purpose of the site plan approval will expire one year after it's approved, which may not be, which may not occur before Sigwassa makes water and sewer to the city.
And is it, do we have the ability to extend that one year?
That's what we're, this whole, this whole thing revolves around, is how to best go about allowing developers and property owners within the city to address that issue by having more time to, you know, permits and other things, entitlements to remain valid or long enough to allow developers to still constantly investing without creating, you know, all sorts of potential unintended consequences.
Perpetuity or something.
Mr. Lanu, I feel like you hit the nail on the head. The whole point is that of this, is that we're not investing, actually with Chad, to create that site plan, stormwater management, the site plan, the full package for a zoning permit approval, until we have some level of certainty that we'll be able to do the project with water and sewer allocation. Because literally that money gets thrown away if we have to recreate that plan and that permit approval in 2027 or 2028 when there's sewer and water allocation. So this is just simply asking, hey, we're willing to make that investment. We want to produce the site plan for review. We want to go through the comments and make sure it's right and achieve approval, and then if we don't have allocation availability, then we can sit on that, and it'll still be approved up until a year after the date that allocation is available. I mean, you're literally right in on the issue, is the reason I'm standing.
Is it in conditional zoning or whatever else is involved with that? Is there any way to specify what he's requesting?
Certainly. So a conditional zoning application could specify the condition, for instance, that a site plan be produced within a specified period of time after conditional zoning approval. If one is submitted as part of the conditional zoning application, you could serve it to the condition that would specify that that site plan remains valid for one year after Sigwassa makes water and sewer to have to be available. You know, I think that there, that language is potentially problematic, but there's certainly a way to go about, you know, including some sort of condition that would, I think, accomplish what Mr. Lanu and probably plenty of other folks are looking for with respect to permit validity.
Commissioner Gleason? Here's my question. 2027 to a guy like me, 2028 is down the road.
I hope I'll still be on this side of the track right there, right, yes. I would like to, could Mike come up and answer a couple of questions for me? My, my main concern here is that we have a limited number of gallons of water available currently to the city.
Correct.
And my only concern is that we don't tie up all this water that we do have, and two, three months down the road, somebody comes along on Main Street and wants to buy a piece of property from where the, where the car dealership is, and wants to put a small restaurant there or something, and we've committed all of our water to something that we don't know for sure it's going to happen. But yet, now we have nothing to give the person that is going to do it. So my concern is not over the fact that we, we, I don't want to tie up what we do have on the hopes that four years down the road, we may get something.
I guess that neither of us can answer this one, but, yeah.
Well, and that's the problem. And that's the problem. We're, we would commit what water we have now to something that is a future, and not have anything to give somebody if they want to come to town in the, in the year, and only need 3,000 gallons of, that, that's my concern.
I'm jumping back because I understand the concern, and the best of all worlds is that we go through the planning process, we work through the zoning permit approval with, with Chad and Michael and his staff, and allocation's available, and we go on the project. As far as I'm concerned, this will only kick in if we can't build the project because we can't get water and sewer allocation. So there's no waiting period on this unless it's already been given to other developers for other projects and other buildings. In other words, if it's already gone. I'm not suggesting that it's available and we're not using it. I'm saying, what do I do with zoning approval if it is no longer available?
All right, so maybe, maybe I'm misunderstanding. I, I just had this to understand that we were going to commit what we do have, even if it's not enough, and, and hold it for the future. The bottom line is, if we're not committing the fact that we can't give that 3,000 gallons away over the next year, because like you say, in 2028, we'll have enough to do whatever we want with it. So that's only, my, my only concern of this is that we're not putting us in a hole where if somebody does want to develop a small project that needs 1,000 or 1,500 gallons, we're giving up that.
So what you all wrote and what you agreed to as a town is that the allocation isn't available to folks like me that want to build or renovate buildings in Creedmore until we have an approved building permit, period. So we don't get that allocation. In fact, that's the concern, that somebody else may come in, achieve zoning permit approval before we do, and, and get the allocation honestly that we're chasing. And if that's the case, we're okay with waiting. We just don't want all the planning work to go away. It's that simple.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
Well, again, it's still confusing to me that, like you say, I understand you don't want to put a lot of money into something that, but if, if you can't do something in a project of yours, get conditional zoning approval, get a site plan, and do Phase One or whatever with the allocation that we can give you, I don't have a problem with that. But if, if it's something that may happen, I don't want, I don't, I guess I don't want to just give the city's water allocation without any kind of a, something that commits something from you as well.
I don't want you to either.
I think the ordinance has a mechanism for it already, and Kevin hasn't accepted words yet, but the word on it is vested rights. These are established law principles that do extend approvals and allow precise plans to live longer than the ordinance calls for as right now is favored. So we have a vested rights section. It exists. Then, there are terms to it about renewals, about coming back to this board to refresh and update the plans as they sit on the shelf. But the mechanism for extending that approval exists in the ordinance today.
What you need to say, man.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
Okay. Stay right where you are. Please, please.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I'm going to say this one more time. I've said this about 15 times in the four years I've been here. Allocation does not come from the city of Creedmore. We make a recommendation to Sigwassa. That's all we do. We do not grant allocation. That comes from Sigwassa, period. So we can promise you the moon, but we can't give it to you. So I just want you to know that. If the mechanism is in place to extend this one year, then we've got the mechanism in place. We don't need to modify anything. I'm going to ask you, Mr. Lanu, to please communicate from now on with only Mr. Frangos. I understand you've been contacting our city attorney with emails and phone calls, and we have a process in place, and your, the process is to work through this man. The taxpayers of Creedmore pay his bills, and I just want to make sure that that's not what's happening here because it's not fair to me as a taxpayer to pay for this man's bill to help you out with your, when we pay this man a salary, I mean, he's got the experience. So I'm going to ask you, on future communications with this, please communicate with Mr. Frangos because he is really put in the place that he is for this reason. He's got the know, we would have never hired him if he didn't have the knowledge. So I'm going to ask you that.
May I respond?
Yeah.
I absolutely did not add the email to the email chain, and I did not reach out to him. He was headed by staff, and I-
I was told that that was done. I'm sorry then, I apologize.
I have a longstanding relationship with Mike, and I'm happy to communicate with him. So anyway, I understand what you're saying, but I didn't initiate that conversation.
Okay, all right.
The second thing is I completely understand that Sigwassa is the one that's holding the purse strings here, and, and what this is about is that Sigwassa doesn't have allocation available when we achieve a zoning permit approval. They keep going back on that same circle, but I get it, that you guys aren't making the decision on allocation. And I have for, yeah, I have to-
Well, to touch on Robert Way's, Commissioner Way's statement, the sentence, frustrated by the lack of action on the direction of the commissioners in the last four months, that's hit a nerve. Not only with me, not only with him, it's hit a nerve. And I would just like you to know that the night we discussed this, you weren't here. You were in Southeast Asia, I believe. But we did discuss it. We did talk about it. Kevin advised us, Mike advised us, and we were all pretty good about, you know, and I talked to you personally when you first talked about this, that you wanted it extended. But if it can always come back to the board and we can grant that extension, I'm okay with it. And in that vein, I agree with Commissioner Gleason. First of all, you don't know how much water you need. We know that. We don't, we know you have 500 allocated already with the property, it goes with it. But we don't know exactly how much water you're going to need. But whatever the balance of the allocation that we have in the city, which Mike, I'm thinking-
It's over 5,000.
It's over 5,000. You're not going to need, unless you build a really, 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 really big place, you're not going to need 5,000 gallons of sewer allocation a day.
But that 5,000 gallons isn't available through a single developer. You have a whole set of rules written.
Half, half that each time, right. So 2,800 at a time, 10-year warranty. That's all we're on this.
So, and I think that what we've learned from you, Mike, is that about 2,500 gallons a day is a normal request for a restaurant, right?
Oh, I don't know that. That depends on the number of seats.
Okay. And we don't know what you're building yet either, and I don't think you've made your final decision on that yet either.
We've been in active discussions, or was, with Mark Hamlet before he left, and Sigwassa about the potential types of uses, the allocation being involved. Sure, that's part of the planning process. And I also want to take a chance to say to all the commissioners, I'm aware that this hit a nerve. What my note said was that I was frustrated that the work hadn't happened, that I understand the commissioners directed in your minutes from February 21st. And so I kept sending, it's not about your action. I felt like all the commissioners asked staff to draft this tax amendment, but then when I sent notes that were very civil and very polite, saying, hey, I'm checking in on timing on this because it's been a while. And I don't think that that's unprofessional or unreasonable to check in on timing. But anyway, have you heard of criticism of the commissioners? That wasn't the purpose of the note. The purpose of the note was, hey, you asked staff to do this, and it hasn't happened. When do you think it might?
Okay, all right then. But you guys have been, you guys have all been in conversation about this since that day, as a matter of fact. I mean-
Frankly, Mike and I have been talking about this before I've heard anything from Mr. Lanu. I think we've all-
And I know that there was communication with the mayor about it, yeah.
It would be an issue for quite some time now.
Just trying to figure out the best scenario.
And figuring out any, whether amending the CDO, a permanent amendment to your development ordinance is the appropriate way to handle this, or whether there's a more effective way for one of the, the development permitting tools that already exist is maybe a better way to go about this. And Mike and I have had that conversation probably monthly for the last six months.
So I just, I mean, I know I spoke to you when I crossed you in the street, and I said, bring it to us. And you have, and they have. I know that this has been going on for a while. So that's why I'm... We have worked on it. We're trying to find out... I thought that we were all set on a developer's agreement, if I'm not calling it the right thing.
And it's still possible, right? But Mr. Lenoe feels that that's not the best course. That's the difference in opinion that we have here. I think Kevin and I feel one way, that the ordinance empowers him to do what he wants to do already.
I don't want to change one ordinance that's gonna affect 20 of them down the line, and possibly we'll have to go back and restructure the whole thing again. And you understand that.
I understand that this potentially has unintended consequences, but I also think that it's pretty straightforward and simple and those unintended consequences could be limited. I also was discouraged by Mr. Hornick about the development plan or development agreements without having the original site plan package at least partially put together, which gets me again to the cart before the horse.
And that's the way we all feel. That's the way...
We talked about them being concurred.
Mm-hmm. And that's the way we all feel. We need some sort of site plan before we go forward with this. And I'm sorry, and I understand the expense of it all, but we've got to have some sort of a give and take in this whole thing, I think, so that we can all work... I mean, it's gotta be... I don't know the word I'm thinking of. It's gotta be a commitment from both of our sides for each one of you. We want this depot. Lord knows... Emma's not here. She said, make sure you understand, we want this depot. We want this.
I hear you saying that. The other message I've heard from the city is, this is not a specific entitlement for one developer. And I think what you're suggesting, you know, this is not just about you, or this can't just be about you. And I actually agree with that. I think this should be available to everyone, everyone that comes to the town that wants to make an investment in the town. And a change in the ordinance is a way to do that, not a development agreement. And then if I'm required to put the zoning permit submittal together to make a development agreement to find out if I can get it extended, the point of this is moot. And our choice will ultimately just be to wait. And I hear that you all support this project and presenting a way that you can do this at no cost to the taxpayers in a very non-complex way. And I'm sure, I'll use the word again, I'm frustrated that this barrier just sort of keeps dropping right in front. Creedmore's in an unusual spot. It may require something somewhat unorthodox to move forward.
Kevin, what my issue with this is, first off, have you considered the vested rights as far as doing it that way? Because they mentioned that would take care of it.
I, to be completely fair, I don't understand how vested rights work. I just simply read your ordinance, and it says your development approval expires in a year. And then I see one option where you can grant a six-month extension, also written right into the ordinance. And I imagine myself coming in here for five years, every six months, to ask for an extension. And the short answer is, no, I'm not gonna do that, especially when I don't know what the answer is on these subsequent extensions.
So what you just said is, come in here for every year for five years. So you want us to tie up a water allocation to give to you for five years?
Absolutely, I'm not wanting to tie up a water allocation. If your water allocation is gone, with Mr....
Yeah, and that...
If your water allocation is gone, or is not enough for that project, then I get to keep my development permit until it is...
Sewer.
It's really important point. I am not asking to tie it up. What I want to have happen is we plan it, we get the water allocation, the water sewer allocation, and we build the project. That's what I want to do. But if the allocation isn't there, I don't want to lose my planning investment. That's it.
Mr. Gleason.
Okay. So my question to the attorney. So really, what you're asking for is an ability to go beyond the normal extension of an approval for zoning, not necessarily water. And you understand that the water is there, and if somebody else uses it, if you come up with a plan that would allow you to do it with 4,000 gallons, and we can figure it out, you may... You understand that even though you have an extended of a year or two years on your zoning agreement, you might still be out of water until 2007 or '28?
What's usual numbers? As I pointed out, I have 500 gallons. I mean, water and sewer side together, so I have 500 gallons of water, you know? The site plan schedule that we have shows six business units. So let's say those six business units need a total of 2,800 gallons. So I'm asking the city, as part of the zoning permit application, for 2,300 gallons. If I achieve zoning permit approval with Mike's office, and there's always a game...
It'll come here. It'll come here for the final purpose.
And then great, that allocation's still available, and we dig in, we have a year on our permit, and we plan and build the project. This is only for it that allocation has been available, and we did wait and do it.
Okay. So now, I guess I'm gonna take my old brain back to February or March, where this same thing was brought up. And I guess the only thing then that we're looking to do was have some kind of a way of allowing an extension without having to ask for it every six months or whatever, that there would be a different timeframe once approval of the zoning permit is given.
Well, I think that Mr. Lenoe's been asking for the same thing since February, which is effectively, what he's looking for is, once he gets his zoning permit, he wants that permit to effectively remain valid until one year after Sigwassa makes water and sewer available for allocation, which could be... I have more of a plan right now, it's 2027, or sewer become available. Is that correct?
It only lasts a bit in 2027.
Okay. So the permit will remain valid, you know, effectively until sometime in 2028?
And there would be no approval of this board to go to Sigwassa and ask them to give them partial or whatever it's gonna be?
That wouldn't come from us. That would come from...
That would come from a face. Imagine you want to implement a face plot. If you want only 1,000 gallons...
Correct.
Sure. If it's two or three, maybe...
I'm not... Like I said, I have no problem, as long as, like I said, it's not committing us to tie up the 3,000 or 4,000 gallons of water we got till 2027. The thing I see here, and maybe I'm wrong, and that's a good possibility. We are offering you, the planning department is offering you, a way to do what you want to do. You are telling us that you don't want to do it that way, you want to do it your way. Am I right on that?
The short answer is no. Because you're asking me, if I want to pursue with a development agreement, I think what I heard from you all is that you're expecting a site plan to achieve that development agreement. What I'm saying is, I don't want to invest in creating that site plan unless I know that the investment, which is significant in time and money that I make into that site plan, that it'll work. It'll either work now with the allocation that the town at Creedmore has, or it'll work in six or seven years when the allocation is available based on the new infrastructure. So that's why I keep saying, cart before the horse, or vice versa, with the development agreement that Mr. Hornick and I have spoken about extensively by email, is essentially creating the same thing that I don't want to create until I have that level of certainty. This was the same issue when we talked about the ordinance that you wrote about how you're going to allocate that allocation that came up because of the study on the Joe Hines workstation.
So we did not discuss this exact thing because of the situation of Sigwassa, that we would put together something which would allow somebody who created all of this and withdrew this to not be committed to the one year after the date it expires type of thing, because of the specific situation of us not having sewer and water allocation at this time that may fit your needs. So you don't want to spend all this money and then lose it. I think that there's got to be a way that we can extend the timeout period or the expiration period of an agreement.
And we've talked about that. Those things could be accomplished through a development agreement or a conditional zoning. That would simply involve proposing as a term in a development agreement or as a condition in a conditional zoning. Upon approval of development agreement or upon approval of the conditional zoning, no site plan need be submitted for review and approval until such and such date. You don't have to... You get an agreement for conditional zoning in place, and then set essentially a schedule for when the rest of the submittals and other work needs to be done during the term of the development agreement. A conditional zoning would allow Mr. Lenoe to get effectively the use inside of this zoning requirements in place for this property. So that if in five years, he decides, well, gee, you know, I've got, you know, my investment tied up in other projects, I don't want to proceed with this, he could sell the property already effectively entitled for this project, which, you know, with the certainty will help him recruit whatever he spent up to that point. You know, all of this, specifically, is already available through the tools that the city has at its disposal without amending the CDO. And this has been suggested for the last six months.
And see, that's my point. We're saying, with our attorney, Mr. Frangos, that there is a process in place without changing anything that will basically do what you want to do. But then we're getting it from you that you don't want to do that. You want us to do it the way you've drawn up. I don't understand why you feel that way when the city already has something in place that'll do what you want it to do.
Will you accept or engage in a development agreement with the LLC that I own without a site plan? Will you agree to a development agreement that the sole topic of that development agreement is to extend the zoning permit approval until sewer allocation is available for the project?
I'd rather that the board can answer that question or make any affirmative argument without receiving a proposal.
We kind of need to know what you're gonna put there.
Well, it would be this language in a development agreement. But I... The message that I got from you is that the answer was no, that the commissioners would not agree to that.
I certainly never said that. I said, I think that any proposal, whether it's a development agreement or a conditional zoning, that you put forward, the board would want to see something that they understand what they could expect in five, 15 years in the future. I'd like to throw in one kick. The ordinance could change in the next five years, too. We all just heard from Forrest, who talked about the differences in Phase Two SCMs and the idea of stormwater capture may or may not be available. So the terms of Mr. Lenoe's approval could change by the time he's ready to build it. So you wouldn't want to be stuck with stormwater requirements that maybe weren't applicable at the time of construction, right? Our approval today would, of course, include SCM, stormwater control measures, along my change.
Well, could those...
They would come back at later times, right? So with the vested right, we could say... At that time, subsidy. Right. After one year, please come back to us. And if one year, we could say, Mr. Lenoe, the ordinance has changed. This isn't required anymore. We can cross this out. We can do this, we can do this. That would happen. But it would happen at subsequent reviews by this board, right? Not that we're gonna approve something today, and we'll see you in five years when the time is right to build it.
And universally, if that same approval requirement could increase some of that year?
It's always a possibility. Plus...
They could go either way. And again, it points back to the very awkward place that Creedmore is in relative to investments and water allocation.
Plus, you need to understand that every two years, this board changes, or usually will change. So, you know, we just can't guarantee what's gonna happen in the next five years. What we're trying to do through what is already there is to... Because like they said, we want this project. I mean, I'd really love to see that in there. So we're not arguing with you on whether it should be here or not. What we're saying is, we feel, and I'm gonna speak for the board, and I try not to do that, but what we feel like is, what you're asking for, we have a process in place that pretty much would do what you want to do, based on what Mr. Frangos and our city attorney says. I don't understand why that isn't sufficient to do what you want it to do, even though it's not worded as like you want to do it.
I don't know how else to say that creation, investment and creation is the type of... There's a significance. Before, there's certainty that we can maintain the approval until we have allocation is different than having that certainty before we make the investment planning. That's it. Across the issues that I've walked in here with. And that's the issue. And that's the difference between what Mr. Hornick, Mr. Frangos is suggesting, and what I'm here suggesting. The other difference, of course, is that the development agreement would apply just to the Old Town Depot. A change in ordinance would apply to any investment that wants to come to the town and build something cool, like on the lot over by where the dealership is.
Mr. Kaczynski.
So when you bought that land, you knew that there was an allocation problem with the sewer, correct?
Yep. And I planned on sitting on the property for five or six years.
Okay. Well, that's... It's nothing we can control. It's... I'm pushing Sigwassa as hard as I can to expedite this and move it faster, but I just don't know what else we get. Like the mayor said, if there's a process in place already, that makes no sense to me to change an ordinance if the process is already there.
Yeah, the green already came up, the study on Joe Hines' station. We have more water and sewer allocation. That's why I'm here. Otherwise, I would have just quietly waited until we had allocation. But the study came, we had a whole, like almost 10,000 additional gallons available to the town. And so, like, and then so we said, oh, great, we can go faster. Let's kick it in here. That's why I'm here. Kick it in here because that allocation is available, and I want to make the investment sooner rather than later.
How much sewer do you need, total?
I don't know. I don't know. I'm checking.
One of the pieces of unfinished business with Mr. Hamlet, when he left Sigwassa, was a negotiation around what works. And sometimes, I don't know if this may be too much information, but there's a very minimal amount of allocation that's required for a fairly general space. And when you create a vanilla shell, and you don't know who your tenant is yet, you don't know whether they're gonna be retail, an office, or a restaurant, there's very different levels of allocation that are required for those. So what I was working through with Sigwassa, was trying to figure out, well, what happens if we set the allocation that would fit easily if we assume it's office space, that the person that wants to lease that space from us, or ultimately buys the space from us, has a use that requires more water and sewer allocation? That's a really long-winded way of saying, I don't know. But what I think the answer is, is right up and about at the limit that it's available to a single developer plus the 500 gallons that we already have. So that's around 2,500 gallons in the city, plus the 500 gallons that's already entitled on the property from the original depot.
Okay. So that's what you think you're gonna need, right? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying, I don't know. I would... That's my... Yes.
Well, now, isn't that available to him now?
Probably yes.
Do they? Yes.
So...
And it's a first come, first served policy.
So if he submitted, and I'm not saying you have to, you don't want to get off track here, but... So if he submitted a site plan as required and all of this, we could grant him the...
Yes. If they agree, yeah.
We could recommend.
We could recommend to Sigwassa that they allocate those gallons.
It is available today.
And recommend that this commission do the final approval on that. And that's the best case scenario. That's when we start. But we're months. We're months away from saying go to having a completed site plan that are complicated. I mean, we just heard about stormwater, and that's one of the many reasons they're complicated.
And legitimately, there are other uses out there posturing for these same gallons. It is a competition.
We just went around in a big circle, then back to the same circle, is that you need the allocation, because like I say, you don't want to spend whatever the money is to create the site plan, to get the conditional zoning permits and all that kind of stuff. And then by the time you go through that and spend that money, somebody else came into town and took 2,500 gallons.
And, and, and we say, great, we'll wait, we'll go back to Plan A. We're going to be there to hang onto our plan.
Then if you're agreeable with that, I agree that we, everything is in place now.
Right. And frankly, might be correct if I'm wrong, but I, I think that under the tools we have available, Mr. Lenou could, in theory, present to you a conditional zoning or a development agreement that doesn't even require him to have a site plan ready at that time.
That was the question I was going to ask. I was patiently waiting over here. He can go ahead.
At any time.
The biggest thing I want to have is if we have in our toolbox where we can accomplish the goal with his wording without changing the ordinance.
Right.
And I think this board is in consensus with moving forward with, with that, without having to go in and change a complete ordinance to accomplish the goal where his permit will be valid without a site plan until he's ready to come for allocation.
And that's the part of the conditional zoning that Kevin referred to. We call them conceptual site plans. They are ordinary photo pictures, not photographs, but pictures, rendered.
Y'all have seen some of those.
Correct. So can we get this wording worked out in, in that particular paperwork? Would that be sufficient?
That's a conditional district application.
We have the wording, he just has to apply it.
And a site plan.
Right. I'm just making sure that everything we just discussed, we could work out with that wording to make sure that you don't have to come before the site plan.
With the, and I, Mr. Horgan, appreciate that. The message I've heard so far is that it would be ill-advised to walk in with a proposed development agreement to the, to your board without a detailed site plan. I, I, I'm happy to propose it. It's not, it won't even, it's not that much time or investment, but I'd hate to do it if, if you're always saying, well, there's no site plan here.
We, uh, we had that discussion when you and I were in City Vision. I was going back and forth with Kevin about rather site plan. And you, I think, suggested that you could present a proposed...
Conceptional.
Thank you. And I remember telling Kevin, I believe, yeah, that's great. Yeah, submit it. You can submit anything you want to, but we're going to need some idea of what you're going to put there before we can, I just don't feel comfortable recommending that this board grants you the allocation without having a pretty good idea of what's going there. It doesn't have to be a site plan, but we need to know what's going to go there.
And that goes to the planning board, not to us, right?
Right. It would come to you.
Ultimately, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. That'd have to pass the planning board first.
Yep. There's a lot of firsts that are going to run out here and I, I understand the, for the will of the commissioners that are going on, I hear all of you, but like you said, I'm asking for allocation. I'm not, I'm asking for something, permit, approval of the extension. I, I still don't know whether to know if committing a development agreement without a site plan or what the whole site plan would be required, or are you guys even considering one, um, plan? I don't know what that means. I also know that that would only apply to me. And I, I, apparently this is a much bigger ask than I thought, but at this moment, it still doesn't feel like a heavy ask.
Right. And I understand that, but as I have learned being mayor for the length of time and paying taxes and everything, it's like dominos. I mean, you hit one and it may go this way, it may go that way, and you just don't know what's going to change the further down it goes. And I think as a board of commissioners that have responsibilities to the entire community, we've got to be very cautious of any changes we make because we have to take into account how it's going to affect people five years, 10 years, 15 years down the road. And, and I think for that reason, we're hesitant to make changes that we feel like we don't need to make.
This plan of dominos could be the dominos line of investment.
Mm-hmm. I, I mean, I understand that, but...
So you, you would have a problem submitting a conditional zoning request that really doesn't commit you to do a site plan, to do anything?
I'd be happy to submit a development agreement application to all, or I don't even know if there's a form, but I could happily draft one. But I'm saying, it would be very simple and straightforward to basically say, hey, we're developing an approval extension if allocation is available.
Um, Mr. Frangos will have a form.
There is a form, conditional district application.
So you do that and we'll go from there. As soon as you get it to us, we'll...
Soon we can work on it.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I've got more of it than I thought.
Well, we want to make sure we do it right. All right. Let's see. Moving on to 5E, North Carolina Park and Recreation Conference and NC RPA Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Carolina's Joint Conference Scholarship. Mr. Horgan.
Good evening. Christopher Horgan, Recreation Director, City of Creedmore. Thanks for your time this evening and for the opportunity to bring this before you. Recreation Supervisor Cheyenne Nickens applied for a full scholarship to attend the North Carolina, South Carolina Joint Recreation Conference. It's held annually, the, I should say, the state conferences are annually, there's a biannual, two state conferences being held this year. It'll be held December 11th, 12th, and 13th in Wilmington. This was something we budgeted to send her to anyways, but she took the initiative to apply for a scholarship to cover those costs so that we could use those funds to, again, send her to this conference and continue to advance her training with the city. She was awarded that. It's about $1,000 value. It includes full, uh, full cost of attending the conference, which is about $300, $350, plus $600 in cash that comes to the city. So the city would accept $600 in cash to cover hotel fees, to cover gas, to cover meal fees as well. So that is what we're just asking permission for, is that, is that considering it as a grant so that we can accept those funds and use them towards sending her to the conference.
All right. Are there any questions? Commissioner Wilkins.
Can you split $600, send Cheyenne?
I'm sorry.
Why is it going to the city? Is it clear?
Uh, she, because she applied on behalf of the city. So the city is paying the bills to send her to the conference.
And Commissioner Wilkins, that's a good thing. In case she goes over, the city's still taken care of.
Make sure.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
So their email says $1,000. And then I'm looking at this presentation and we got 600 and 355.
955.
Which totals up to 955. Is it $1,000?
Well, it says approximately $1,000.
The, the value is $1,000.
Not in the email.
So the cash that's being given to the city is 600, but they're also covering 355, which is the conference registration fee. They're covering that directly and not sending the 355 to us and turn around and pay them back.
Gotcha.
So she would have to work within the $600 if she wanted to...
She would have to...
If she went over 600, would that come from the city?
That would come from the city.
We cover it, right?
Commissioner Gleason, any questions or comments? Commissioner Way.
Outstanding. I'm glad she took initiative to do something like that. That's, uh, wonderful. I make a motion that we approve.
Motion to accept NC RPA Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Carolina's Joint Conference Scholarship Award of approximately $1,000 is made by Commissioner Way. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no. Tell Cheyenne we are extremely proud of her to taking the initiative, not only to attend this conference, but to save the City of Creedmore some money too.
Thank you for encouraging her to do that.
All right. Next, we move to the Granville County TDA Grant and Approval, and that's from Mr. Horgan again.
Yes, absolutely. And, and listening to the budget talk earlier this year, conferring with Commissioner Kaczynski, Mike Frangos, our police chief, it was recommended that we use the Granville County TDA Grant, Tourism Development Authority Grant to apply for funding for both the traffic management devices that are recommended for the city. Those are those big orange screens that flash, you know, X, X-road is closed, detour here. Can be used for a lot of different things, including promoting events, as well as wayfinding finds throughout, uh, wayfinding signs throughout the city. So a grant request was drafted for $15,100. That's $15,100 with 600, $6,600 going towards the wayfinding signs and $8,500, approximately 50% of the funding for a traffic message board. Just so we know, we do have some feedback. I think the estimated cost of the wayfinding signs is probably around 12?
4,000 for the first sign.
3,000, we're thinking 3,000. We're thinking about 12. As I understand it, there's 6,000 in the budget for this year already, so the grant for 6,600 would add to that, give us the 12 that we need to design those three signs. I believe that also included design, you know, permitting, installation, fabrication. It uncovers everything from top to bottom. And then the $8,500, we didn't ask for the full amount for that traffic management device just because it's a little bit outside the norm for what that grant has been used for. So we did have to massage it a little bit to get some participation. What the TDA is asking for, if they give us and we accept that $8,500, is that when they come to an ask and they have an event up in Oxford or somewhere else in the county, that we pull out that board and we use that board here in Creedmore, not that we give them that board to use up there, but we're using that board to provide, promote tourism and activities throughout Granville County. This isn't something that, in speaking with them, is going to be, you know, a weekly request, you know, maybe a dozen events throughout the year that they're asking for it. I did have a chance to talk to the chief. Chief is okay with that as well. So that is, uh, the only condition with accepting these funds is that they ask for us to use it to promote other events throughout Granville County, being a tourism grant, so we grant them use of that board here in Creedmore to do so.
Any questions? Mr. Way, any questions? Commissioner Gleason. Commissioner Kaczynski.
That's what I wanted to find out. Chief, you're okay with setting these things up for all these different things? Um, uh, where did we come up with the cost for the wayfinding signs? I, there was like six different samples that I, pictures I sent.
I had enlisted to one provider.
Okay.
It's a company that I managed to get a complete bid for a turnip project.
Okay. All right. Mr. Turner, I would like to make sure that when we decide on these wayfinding signs, that the Board of Commissioners gets to vote on which ones we choose.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wilkins. Chris, it never ceases to amaze me, the job that you do down there in finding money. Come tax time, I'm going to come, let you look at my finances.
Keep in mind, I often spend a lot of money too.
The, the motion says motion to approve. Do we need to accept?
Accept.
Okay. Because they've already approved it.
Okay. So motion to accept the $15,100 capital improvement grant to fund three wayfinding signs for $6,600, $8,500 toward funding 50% of a traffic message board is made by Commissioner Wilkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no.
Second motion, I think.
Those are attachments.
That's, okay.
No, there's two motions. It says requested motion.
I thought.
Yeah, I read.
I did the bottom one, I did the one.
Approve the 5,000 mini...
Okay. We'll do that one too. Motion to approve the $5,000 mini grant to subsidize marketing for the Creedmore Music Festival.
Accept.
Uh, and since we've already done one, Mr. Wilkins, you want to make that motion?
So moved.
Motion is made by Commissioner Wilkins on that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carries. Let me make a quick note of that. All right. Chris, thank you.
Nope.
Well, I can still thank him. All right. 5G Granville County Mini Grant.
Yes, absolutely. So Granville County offers, in addition to the funds they pay us based on our population each year, they also open up to municipalities and not just municipalities, but any organization that would like to provide recreational activities in the community. They offer a grant for mini grants, capital grants, program grants. It comes available, you must apply for it in January of each year. This past year, November, the CPRC discussed several opportunities. We wanted to look at something that wasn't new, when that, we're in the process of doing the plaza, in the process of doing the field. We didn't want to do anything that would, would be new and add to the burden of the budget, so that was one thing. We wanted to add on to something that we were already proud of, as well as something that wasn't going to add, again, really additional fees to the city and meet the grant requirements of the county, what they were looking for. So after looking at several different things, we recommended that we spend money on some fencing down at the newly refurbished B.C. Roberts Field. What we're looking at here, so we just kind of tilt our head this way, it's about 100 feet. We're looking on the east side, right above here, you see that long blue line up top, it's about 135 feet of fence. Right beyond that is a steep gully that's going to drop off. So we need the balls that are going to kick around the soccer field, we need the kids that are running at different times. We want to keep them out of that wooded area, so that's 135 foot fence. Also double the place where we can actually put a three-by-six, what do I want to say, banner if people want to go ahead, to give us something already out there to hang those banners on. Over on the right-hand side, we have 24-foot backstop, three eight-by-eight panels, slightly at an angle, not for baseball, not for softball, since it was more kickball, wiffleball, dishing crafters. The field really can't accommodate baseball and softball, but doesn't mean we can't accommodate other sports along those. So again, a different use for B.C. Roberts Field. We're still getting a lot of different use out of it. And then it also requests several thousand dollars for 17-foot by six-and-a-half-foot soccer goal out there as well. So things we would want to do to improve the B.C. Roberts, the, the funds that you were investing this year in the field, just kind of take it to the next level and add on top of that. Again, something we can turn out really quick. There's no design required for it. We just go ahead and, you know, bring in the contract and put the fence down, put all the soccer goals, put them out there, we'll go. So nice and quick and easy grant plan to bring to the city.
All right. Any questions? Mr. Wilkins. Commissioner Kaczynski.
So the big Jerry fencing estimate that's in here is valid until February 1st. I spoke to Nelson today. He thinks this is going at your house. He said, this is a residential quote. Christopher Horgan at 108 East Wilton Avenue, it's not for City of Creedmore. I, I advised him that it was commercial and I wanted to make sure that the quote didn't change.
Well, I need to reach back out to him. One thing I did, actually call him because he was the lowest bidder, and go over the different parts of the estimate as well to make sure that he was giving that it was commercial grade, what we were going to use it for.
Well, it does say commercial black vinyl. It, it is commercial grade. But anyway, he said the price didn't change, we're good. He can still guarantee it.
That's...
But again, he wanted to know this is going to Mr. Horgan's house. So I'm like, yes, absolutely. I told you before it was your house. Okay. So on your little chart of numbers, I want to know, I have gone through, back to December 6th of 2022, 9/6 of 2022. You've never asked us for fencing for that field.
You're right.
You have still not asked us. You've got it in this. You still haven't even asked permission to put fence up there. We haven't even voted on fencing there. Because I went through everything and I'm like, I don't remember talking about this. The other thing is, at the bottom of this chart, it says end, $38,922 scheduled to occur in the summer of 2023. What is that? $38,922, where we're talking about total local match.
Oh, that's the match that you're putting into it right now. The, you're the field re, the, the B.C. Roberts Field reimbursement, uh, the refurbishment. Your contract with Nolan Thomas is approximately $38,000.
Okay. That's, I, I thought it was that, but I wanted to double check.
How do you think that is a match to show, look, we've got, you know, added...
Yeah, because we've already paid for that. So, um, I think we need a motion to approve the fence in the backstop before we accept this grant because you've already asked for the grant for the fencing and we haven't even improved the fencing. So it's kind of like, as Mr. Lenou would say, cart before the horse situation.
And I would say, you know, we discussed this at our November CPRC meeting, discussed it again at our December CPR, or our January CPRC meeting, we do have a board liaison that kind of echoes those concerns or brings anything back to the board. the board that may need to be discussed further. Also mentioned in the manager's report for, I think, a couple of months that we were putting this out here. So I didn't want anything to be a surprise, but definitely when we're talking about a little bit of fencing, things that are within the scope of what you were using B.C. Roberts Field for as a B.C., as a multipurpose field for multipurpose sports, anything that would be along those lines, that's not a required, you know, investment for the city to improve playability or usability of it, wouldn't be something I would normally come back to the board for and ask, you know, preapproval for on something of this particular material. I can definitely change that in the future, but just keep in mind, you know, in terms of when we get this, we have a discussion, things got to be in, they don't always align with, you know, the board schedule. So I definitely try and bring these things up at the CPRC meetings that we have, get some consensus from, you know, our liaison from our CPRC meeting, and try and look at, you know, what's the scope of the project that we already have out there, is what we're doing for that grant already aligned with it or I don't need to come back and add to it.
Okay, and that's fine, except we still have to ask the board before we do stuff like that because we're responsible for that field. And I've got these two drawings from December and August, and I have circled the single-arm, swing-arm gate and post and looked on both of these diagrams, expand them. There's still no fence on here. So the last drawings we were provided with still had none of this on here.
That's a separate project. This isn't part of the B.C. Roberts Field refurbishment project that we've engaged with Nolan Thomas for the design, for the, yeah, those documents reference the plaza design, not the B.C. Roberts Field.
Okay. Well, that's the only thing that I wanted to say because this is the last time, if I'm still here. This is the last time I'm going to approve for a grant when the contents of that grant have not been requested from the board before. This has to stop. I thought I had said this once before, but the request to the board of renovations to that field have got to come to the board for our decision before they're forwarded to a grant submission. And I thought that the soccer goals came out of another grant. I thought there was another private grant that soccer goals came out of. All right.
Mr. Gleason? Any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a, oh, no, Mr. Liv has your. I'd like to make a motion, a motion that we approve putting fence and backstop and that we accept the grant to do it.
All right. Barbara, do you have that?
Okay. We have a motion to approve the fencing and backstop and to accept the 2023 Granville County Mini Grant for seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty cents from Commissioner Gleason. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries four-two-zero.
Yes, thank you for the grant.
Thank you very, yeah, thank you for the opportunity to serve.
This one is the B.C. Roberts Field sign going back up?
So last week, me and Stephen and his crew met and we selected a location for it. So it will go, it may go up sooner or later, but if it goes up sooner, there's going to be a bag over it because that's going to be part of your responsibility to rip that bag off. So it may go up, you know, it's really going to be based on the priority of our Public Works Department if any emergencies come up. But, you know, I've said we're doing a grand opening in September, so, you know, you might see it one day, a big black bag back there. That's what it's going to be.
All right, moving along, we're at five H. Discuss our purchase of Hester Road property. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, on April the fourth, the city agreement went into a contract with Wallace Pfeiffer Group for the sale or Hester Road property totaling three hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred dollars. On May eighteenth, Pfeiffer received a substantial offer with the required five percent earnest money required. At the June sixth regular board meeting, staff were directed to begin the upset, ten-day upset bid process, which happened from June sixteenth through June twenty-sixth, for a total of eleven days because the tenth day landed on Sunday, so we went through five o'clock on Monday. This evening, the board is being asked to discuss the current offer, which is two thousand, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred dollars, and the options of accepting or rejecting or rejecting the offer. And I'd like to ask City Attorney Hornick, has he got anything he'd like to add to this conversation before the board discusses it?
I do, Mike. So after the original ten-day upset bidding period expired, the city received a second offer, which I believe was in the amount, in the upset bid amount, I won't pretend to do the math off the top of my head, but it was the appropriate increase over that original offer.
How much did?
I couldn't tell you what those numbers are off the top of my head. But, so, I wanted to make sure that we share that information with the board before you make your decision on the original offer. As you all may recall, we have to take action on the bid that we've received pursuant to the upset bidding process. You are free to accept or reject for any reason, any bid that was received during the upset bidding process.
I've got those other numbers, if it's appropriate to give them.
I would suggest, just for the purposes of the appearance of propriety, that we not discuss the specifics of offers that were received outside of the upset bidding period. But, you know, it was the minimum upset bid offer that was required under that upset bidding statutory calculation.
I'll make a motion that we do not accept the initial bid and reopen the bidding process.
Is that what you're looking for?
I think that's for a real-
Barbara, do you have that?
And just to make a friendly amendment, would you attend to your motion and you direct staff to, I think you already mentioned, opening the new bid up, would you just direct staff to go through the upset bidding qualification process?
I would add that, yes.
Any-
Would it begin at the highest, at the top number we got from the last one?
Right, so it would begin at-
It would upset after that.
Right, and so we would open up a ten-day upset bidding period based on that most recent offer. We, the board can't unfortunately accept that this evening because it was received by the city, submitted outside of that ten-day upset bidding period, but you can, under the statute, reject the first bid and then start with the upset bidding process again with using this one to be an initial bid.
Good.
Good.
Is everybody clear on the motion from Mr. Gleason that he expressed so eloquently through the attorney? Any other questions? Not seeing any. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries four-two-zero. All right. Now, do we need to do anything else?
No.
It's all included in that motion, okay.
I haven't had one very distinct motion.
Yeah, just want to make sure we didn't miss a T or miss an I.
So it'll be ten days after we notice it again?
That's correct. So Barbara will prepare, has prepared the notice, Barbara's on top of it, and that will be published and then ten days from the initial date of publication, we'll have to allow members of the public to submit new bids and to publish it.
And we can probably get it back before our August first meeting.
All right, moving to five I for both street utility relocation. Mr. Frangos?
Good evening, members of the board. This item is an update that we have for you regarding the Furbow Street Utility Relocation. Unfortunately, it's not a good update. It's an update that says we have not been able to find a suitable public utilities contractor that is willing to bid on the Furbow Street Utility Relocation Project. There have been efforts to identify potential bidders, but so far, no contractor has requested a full set of the plans to perform a full bid on. Dave Malinowski, who is our project engineer from the Wooton Company, has suggested to us that the strategy now would be to extend and re-advertise the bid. Honestly, we don't really have another choice. We don't have a contractor in-house or anybody that is available to do this type of public utility work. He does want to spread our message a little bit further using the North Carolina Interactive Purchasing System. Initially, we thought this wouldn't be necessary because we could lure somebody in, but unfortunately, right now, in his terms, there are an extreme lack of bidders out there right now, contractors are busy, and there are labor shortages. So we are not exactly in demand. Project is ready to go, we just can't find a contract to do it.
All right. Commissioner Way, any questions?
Is it Wooton that's saying they can't find anybody?
Right, Wooton is in charge. We have Wooton under contract for a turnkey process of this. So the bid, the informal bid process is theirs. They've been trying to solicit contractors to get complete bids. Nobody's done it.
So we have to continue to use Wooton's? Can we use our own city engineer to pursue and our own resources to go?
Oh, we do. We have help. We've tried to help, but we are under contract with Wooton to perform this. They are under contract to do this turnkey service. We've been trying to help them. We've referred folks that we've had, we've researched firms, Carl, you know, knew some folks that we called up and tried to entice to bid. Just nobody's done it. Nobody's been willing to.
We're how much of a priority we are on Wooton's list.
Mr. Gleason?
Somebody whispered in my ear about this, that at some point, there was a possibility that we could talk to Seiguasa and see if they had a contractor that they use and they have public utility contractors that do their small work.
At the time that we wrote this staff report, we had just reached out to them. We certainly had talked about it, but we had formally reached out, Carl did via an email, to Seiguasa and say, hey, can you all ask your contractor? That happened after the staff report was put together.
Okay, that is something that-
It's still in the works, right? It's still, it's still out there. There is no deadline on the informal bidding process. We're still, you know, somebody walked out in here today and said, hey, I'm a public utilities contractor, I want to give you a price. That's what we want to hear. Unfortunately, nobody's up and volunteering for that. So we're still just out there trying to solicit unless we can. And yes, we are helping.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaczynski?
You ready for this?
What you're going to say?
Yeah, you are. On November first, David Malinowski came to us and said, and I'm quoting, the next, we are act, we are basically ready for the bidding process. That's a lie. He lied to us. I've got the string of emails from November back to Heidi. The easements weren't finished. Kevin gave you guys the documents, but they weren't secured. And it was on July eleventh that Carl reached out to Seiguasa. And Seiguasa answered the next day. Wooton has drug its feet on this project from everything I'm reading, I have seventeen pages of emails. Wooton has drugged their feet on this. And we pay them monthly, do we?
We pay them as-is.
Okay.
We pay them based on our rewards.
So Kevin, this is kind of your question and Mike's too. Since this equipment belongs to Seiguasa and Carl's questions that went back, the project manual on this project was not even done until July twenty, until June twenty-seventh, by the way. That was when the project manual was done by Wooton. We've been waiting eight months to get this done. Carl's questions were perfect. I read his questions, his questions about the project manual and suggestions were great. I believe that Carl has the knowledge. We've got the project manual, we've got the engineering study done, we've got Dan at Seiguasa, we've got Seiguasa, and we've got Carl. I want to say, let us do this ourselves now. Scott sent four contractors to, he told Dan to send four names of contractors to Wooton because that's what he was asked to do, instead of sending them to the city. I have them all. Wooton has, I believe this is a non-performance of contract, to be honest with you. When he stood in this room and presented to us it was ready for bid and it was not. The preliminary plaques, the documents were preliminary, they weren't finalized. Heidi sent that to him. Mike, they put this thing out for bid on June twenty-seventh, I think, for fourteen days. That's it. You don't put a bid out for fourteen days, it goes thirty to sixty. Normal. And I have checked, fact-checked all this stuff. So my question is, let's let Wooton go, Carl can work with Dan and Seiguasa, it's Seiguasa's equipment. Can't we get Seiguasa to run on this? And we have had two manholes replaced at Seiguasa in the last four months, and it took three weeks for each one of them. This is ridiculous. When I called Scott and said, your message says referrals for contractors they work with to no avail, Scott wasn't pleased with that statement. I understand the statement, the timing was off. But you know, I get like a mama bear when it comes to Seiguasa, and Seiguasa has worked very, very hard. And I don't believe anybody else has worked hard at all on this project. I've waited four years for this project to get done. And I, this is Wooton. I'm reading these emails back and forth and back and forth, and specific performance on Wooton's part, I don't believe that we have had that. That every time you ask them a question, they're like, oh, well, you know, we got something else, and, oh, well, we got something else. And this is seventeen pages of emails, and I'm glad Carl sent it to Seiguasa because otherwise, I would have possibly blamed you and you didn't do this. This is Wooton dragging their heel on this. So is it possible that we can, Wooton is a consulting engineer, right?
Wooton is our consulting engineer.
Not anymore, they're not. We have our own engineer.
We use engineers all the time, multiple firms. Carl is our city engineer, but we have many engineering firms that we continue to work with. We have Wooton under contract, under an agreement. Now, the agreement could certainly be terminated, amended, adjusted.
They violated that contract when they, this is ridiculous. This is insane. I got the minutes of the meeting and he said, we're ready for bidding. And they weren't anywhere near bidding. It didn't go to bidding till the end of June. The project manual wasn't ready, the easements weren't done. Thank God for Gerard, who stalked out a homeowner and got a easement done, but the plaques weren't final, they were preliminary. I can't believe the man stood up here and said, we're ready. He wasn't ready.
So if we're to go with this, you're asking whether this is a contract that we can terminate, I certainly, I'm not in a position to even make a recommendation.
No, I know that, you've got to look at it.
But, you know, I'm happy to speak with you offline, please, you know, send me whatever you got, I can take a look at the contract and kind of talk this through, perhaps set it for a closed section discussion at the on-year first date. And, you know, on firm, add.
This is absolutely insane that this has gone on for all these years. There's a homeowner with a manhole that's growing in his backyard. This is not the way we treat the citizens of Creedmore. This is not right. And, and until I saw this, I had no idea what the real holdup was, but it says, I don't think I have received recorded easements, and that was on April twenty-eighth. And that was from Wooton to- And that was from Wooton to us. And, um, Mike answers them and says, "They're all recorded, and it's been sent," and they said they don't have them. I don't know how much we're paying these people, but they are not accomplishing the job that I would think that we're paying them for. That's my personal opinion. And I believe, I have spoken to Scott Schroyer, and like I said, we had a manhole that was eight feet under the ground that broke a pipe, and it was winter, Mike, uh, Robert, winter, cold winter. And they went down in the hole. They got people there, and it was done. Carl, can I ask Carl if he feels confident working with Dan to finish this project?
Carl, would you like to step up here and participate?
I think from your questions, you've got a good handle on this.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, members of the board. I think it's a little more complicated than that, ma'am. Um, it's just trying to get a contractor to, and I think something may have been lost in translation when I sent the email to Dan. I wasn't asking him to provide some names of contractors. It was for him to lean on his contractors, for him to call and to ask for help. We did a similar thing with the slab project down at the community center. I couldn't get a testing firm to give you the time of day because we don't typically call concrete soil testing firms. So, I thought, I was hoping that Sigwasa did the same thing. They would contact one of their typical contractors and say, "Hey, you know, Creedmoor's getting things out for bid, but it's ours to help you please, you know, bid a bid for it."
Okay.
So, making it as simple as having them, you know, call one of those four that they sent to Wooton. Just have Sigwasa call one of those four and maybe they'll-
There's, what is going on with the city of Creedmoor that we can't get contractors to bid jobs for us? And it's not a matter of dollars. I can promise you, it's not such a small job. Nobody wants it because the manhole we replaced at Sigwasa was $150,000. The prices are very well in the same. So, it's not a matter of labor shortages. It's not a matter of shortages. If we've got two jobs that nobody will bid for the city of Creedmoor, we've got a different problem.
It's not a long-term relationship. Sigwasa may have small jobs, but they have many others.
Right.
We haven't had a, we haven't paid you until the contractor reneges. So, I'm assuming that's the problem, is we don't have that established relationship.
I'm thinking since it's Sigwasa's stuff, that could we contract with Sigwasa to get it done? I don't know if this is all ethical in how we do this, but I'm just, I want this done.
If we put the bill, they-
Of course we'll foot the bill.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, that, yeah.
I mean, if they wanted to manage it for us, however we can get this done.
Let's get it done.
I don't see, from a legal perspective, I can't see any reason why Sigwasa could not have a, on the ground, such a written one.
You and Jim are becoming good friends lately, I understand. Mike, would that be okay with you to work with Kevin and try and get this?
Whatever the board wants, we'll do it. Yes, ma'am.
You, here, seventeen pages of emails, or do you want them digitally?
I can take those digitally.
There you go.
I think I had it to his notebook.
Enjoy it. I'll send to you by emailing it.
Commissioner Wilkins, any would like to weigh in on since, very eloquently, Commissioner Wilkins, you, y'all good.
We can also get you their contract.
Mr. Frangos.
Sir, I'm not going to move from here for a little while, so I'll just go ahead and up. So, this one relates to 2766 Clifton Avenue. We do have the designer here, Anna Wadsworth, works for the Wooton Company, and she has been our stormwater consultant in this regard. She is the designer of record for this project. You recall, this relates to the Conway residence there on Clifton Avenue in Golden Pond. If you flip, Barbara, would you mind flipping to some of the pictures in the plan? Um, page C, 2.0? Oh, yeah, there they, they have to, yeah. One, two, three, four, that's right. There you go. And then forward again. So, you see, those are the two differences in the design. Go back. There you go. So, the first one is the easiest, alternative one, less expensive. The assumption there is that the box under the driveway, that assumes that the box under the driveway is in not usable condition, and we have to put in this alternative that connects both the curb inlet to the yard, inlet to a new manhole. That's alternative number two. So, that's the gist of everything right there. If from there, Barney, turn to further on to the estimates, option one puts a subtotal at, and I would have to go bigger again. Option one puts the subtotal at $56,599. That's the simpler, straightforward shot. And option two puts the subtotal at $82,452. That's the one that involves more infrastructure and additional manholes. We don't know. Have to destroy the driveway, excavate the existing pipe in order to then determine the best option.
How do you have to rip up the- Fix the driveway?
We're going to fix the driveway as part of the project. No, no. We haven't fixed it yet.
Fixed half.
We fixed the slab. We fixed the garage slab.
Why don't we just buy a half?
So, if you go with the more expensive plan, you don't have to rip up the driveway?
No, no, we do. In both cases, we do. In both cases, we do. The driveway saw obvious signs of collapse, the same kind of problems that afflicted the garage, but we didn't choose to ramjack the driveway because we knew we'd likely have, I saw that. But Anna is here. If you all have any questions for her on this, she could, best equipped to answer those.
So, the next step either way is to find out if that box has collapsed.
Well, the next step right now would be to budget. What I'm asking for you tonight is to go forward and authorize the budget amendment. The first step of the construction, of course, is going to be to demolish the driveway and excavate exactly where that junction box is, find out what's going on there.
Okay.
You know, and excavate the-
Yeah, I understood the other, the fine tuning. I was just, as far as the project itself, the first thing, I don't know if she wants to come up here.
I'm glad I'm not Dave. Um, I want to, before we start talking, obviously, that was a hard pill to listen to, and-
Could have told me who you were before I opened my mouth.
No, I'm actually glad that you said something because that's not what we are. And Dave has, you know, I'm not making excuses for Dave, obviously. This project, when I first started with Wooton Company, it was going on, and I'm like, "Why is it taking this long?" So, I'm with you. Um, actually helped with the erosion part of FERVO, so I did work on it a little bit. But there are still good people that work for Wooton, so I would ask you to reconsider before you know the contracts. And I'm sorry, I'm sick, so I'm just, it's been a week. But anyway, can you please repeat the question? Why came up here?
I guess the question was, what's the best way to do it?
I, okay, so if it was in our engineering judgment, I would think option two is your best. It's a little bit more expensive, but it gets that box from out under the driveway. You're able to maintain it. If anything happens in the future, you don't have to rip up the driveway again. So, I don't think for that small increase in price, it's really that much to consider. That's our recommendation, do option two.
I'd like to make a motion to recall the recommendation. We had a budget amendment for the, uh, $107,187, which again, I agree. Fixing the box and keeping it under the driveway is like creating a problem that's going to happen again, maybe not in my lifetime, but in someone else's.
Yeah, I mean, I think a little bit of the cost there is, you know, replacing or relocating some table boxes. I mean, stuff like that, that's small, but the majority of the work's going to still be the same, other than extending that pipe to go over there.
Before we can vote on this, Mr. Mayor, I have some discussion. Yeah, and we will do that. Let me make a note of Commissioner Gleason's motion. Uh, let's see. 107, 187. Okay. Commissioner Way. Mr. Frangos.
Yes, sir.
You can stay where you are. This will come out of our stormwater funds, correct?
Yes, this is a stormwater project. These are eligible for stormwater funding.
If we move forward with this project, are we going to run into the same problem that we've ran into with the we can counterpart?
I will be leaving this project, so-
So, are you going to stay up here?
I've been responsible so far. I was out for two weeks on vacation, but I'm back now.
Okay. An oversight. So, at this point, Anna's work is about, maybe ninety-five percent done because she'll still need to consult with us on the ultimate fix.
So, from this point forward, since they're done, is this something that we can handle in-house?
I wanted to make one other suggestion.
Okay.
I don't know how it works with funding, though, but would it be possible to combine both of these projects and bid it? If you get a project that's a little bit more money, you may get a little bit more of attractiveness to contractors.
Check our contractors, like contractors like-
I know. I know. The thing may, I mean, that's-
If maybe one contractor was interested in both.
Yeah. I mean, I know, I'm not going to mention any name. We have one in mind we can ask, but, I mean, it's just something for guys. Don't have to listen to that, but it just may help, you know, a little bit more.
My biggest thing is, is we move forward with the project and get it done because this is another one that's been dragging along for a little while.
Thank you.
As we've stated, we've got a lot of things on here to get done and rectified, and I'm sure there's more waiting in the hopper, I guess you could say.
Well, if I can do anything with FERVO or this one to help you guys get what you need to do, please let me know.
And nobody will come forward again. I know that.
This is an informal bidding process, just like the last one. Um, we do have our site contractor, who's our best friend lately, the one, Chris Wilco.
Okay.
They're the one that we use. They did the Lopez project for us earlier this year. Did an excellent job on the Lopez project. We hope it'll be available for us to work on this week.
How did this box get under impervious? That's a violation. By who?
A free trial of all contenders. Sign off on the class and reclaim later.
Me, because that's my first question, is how did the box get under the driveway in the first place?
And that's one of the issues I think we as a board are facing in several things is, and what I'd wanted as far as Mr. Vanu was concerned, prevent from happening ten, twenty years down the road that it comes back and bites this board who, I don't know about you, but I'm not sure I'm going to be here in ten, twenty years.
They'll come throw weeds on our-
They'll come get me, won't they?
Um, so, do you have a timeframe?
Construction plans are done, so our, we can-
The easement, we don't need any more easement, anything?
This is all the contracts. It's all-
Right. So, they've already told us, "Go for it and do it." So, the $107,000 is to tear up the driveway and relocate the box somewhere else. Can we get some sort of an agreement from the homeowner that they will never pave over where, I'm serious. I'm absolutely serious.
Well, there will be easements that put in place based upon the ultimate improvements that get established. That's actually another that we will need to look for at the end. They have to give us a final easement, but again, we can't track them because we don't know where they're going back.
Well, you know, where it's going to go. Right.
But there are two choices. So, we don't know. Yes, which means they've been prepared. The easement term will be sold, paid over our interest.
Right. And that's very significant for that type of utility easement. I mean, they, you know, they can do stuff within the easement area so long as they understand that they can't interfere with the purpose of the easement. So, paving over it would certainly be a fair issue.
Yeah, but people do that all the time around Creedmoor. So, it says preliminary, but can we kind of count on these numbers? And I see we have a thirty percent contingency, so there is kind of a swing in this one big time because we don't know which way it's going to go.
Yes, and it is for all of us. I mean, there's two options, and that's why it's preliminary right now because I don't, I didn't know which option the board would approve at this point.
For budgeting purposes, we'd like you, of course, to approve a larger amount. Obviously, if it's not needed, the money will go on strength and it'll be returned.
So, the stormwater fund?
Right.
Not the fund, the stormwater fund. Yeah.
Need to be specified in the motion.
Um, that's, what I just wanted to find out is how did the box get under the driveway? It should have never been done that way. Okay.
Mr. Wilkins.
Thank you very much. All right. At this time, I'm going to request a motion to proceed with stormwater repair at 2766 Clifton Avenue for total 107, 187. The budget amendment for this will be presented at our August 1st meeting.
And I think Ed has a motion to ask back.
Oh, okay. All right. So, the motion's been made by Commissioner Gleason. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
Motion carries three to one. Thank you so very much, and we're going to hold you at your feet to the fire as far as helping us get through all this.
You know, we're perfectly fine. Again, I do apologize.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for all your time tonight. Item 5K, code enforcement officer hours. Mr. Frangos.
Um, in your agenda packet, I presented to you the case of our code enforcement officer, Gerard Seabert. In the recent past, he's been putting in more than his allocation for hours in response to our need for labor around the community development department, but doing that exceeds the thousand hours, I'm sorry, well, the 832 hours that he's been budgeted, and then exceeding a thousand hours puts us into a different realm when it comes to payroll tax for federal and local government employee retirement system expenses. So, we like Gerard. We want to keep Gerard working. He has several large projects that he's in the middle of, lots of enforcement activity. So, what this motion, or what the requested motion would be, would be to allow him to go forward at 24 hours per week for a cost of $10,347 in addition to his existing salary.
Um, Mr. Wilkins, any questions or comments, sir?
None. I think he has a good job.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
No, I just wish we would have brought this up at the time of the budget.
Wasn't fully aware of it at the time. Honestly, Sarah, well, I wasn't fully aware of it. Sarah brought it up to us as far as the fact that we've exceeded that thousand, and that's when the question marks started coming up.
Makes sense. Commissioner Gleason.
No question.
Mr. Way.
Do we have enough things going on enforcement-wise?
Yes.
To look at maybe this being a full-time position?
Potentially, yes. It has been a full-time position in our past. You all might know Rico Ellis. Rico was a full-time code enforcement officer, and he spent his time doing that work. There certainly is a need, but we try to keep it in budget. I guess that's the best way to say it. Eighteen, uh, two days a week has been enough. I think certainly there could be more. It's up to you.
So, is that something you suggest for the budget next year?
Maybe next year, sure.
I think that would be an ideal time to take a look at it.
That's what I mean, yeah.
All right. Did you have any other questions, Commissioner Way?
No, no. I understand how busy he is. I see the truck, ask him for-
He spends a lot of time in the field.
Yeah, I see him all around town.
He is everywhere. He's on.
All right. At this time, I will entertain a motion to authorize the code enforcement officer position for 24 hours per week.
So moved.
Motion is made by Commissioner Kaczynski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Carl, I believe that's you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the board. I have the, uh, map sheet. All right. I'm sure everybody's aware that the Creedmoor 2040 Plan has identified a dozen sidewalk gaps for possible future construction. And there's probably a reason why there are currently gaps instead of sidewalks there. You know, the need wasn't justified and it's okay. So, my goal at this signing stage is to estimate the cost for each of those twelve sections. To this, I use an estimating tool- To do this, I use an estimating tool that I downloaded from SD DOT's Integrated Mobility Division, formerly Bike and Ped. Needed a fancy name, I guess. The estimating tool is part of a research project, and it's designed to include all the costs associated with an independent pedestrian project, whether sidewalk, or bicycle lane, shared routes, paths, various different ones. Independent, I mean, it's not part of an overall vehicle project, a roadway project. It is just a sidewalk project, it has to capture all the associated costs with it to give you an accurate estimate. So the input data that I entered in the estimating tool included the length of the sidewalk, the length of curb and gutter it needed, the number of driveways, intersections, crosswalk, and generally what kind of terrain is involved. Additional data that's collected, because it would go into factor also, was utility, the number of property owners affected, easements required, topographic challenges, pedestrian preferences, strip origin and destination, where they come from, where they're going, existing sidewalks to connect to, and any unique aspects, whether they're technical aspects, social, demographics, et cetera. Then the tool outputs median industry cost, and it breaks it down into several categories. The first one is preliminary engineering. That includes the cost of design, environmental review, and permitting. Then the next category is the driveway, that comprises the cost of the easement plus the associated administrative costs, traffic control, erosion control, utilities, and last but not least, sidewalks. So the tool, it also includes construction engineering and inspections, contingency, and NC DOT oversight that's required. Those three are based on percent of the first three. So I say all that to let you know, it includes many, many things, so if anything, it should be on the high side, if you take these actions and actually, you'll perceive with one, it shouldn't be, shouldn't exceed that. If you're lucky, it'll be less than that, because sometimes when you don't know, the safest option is to include something, include it in your package. Please go to the summary sheet. So my intent right now is to provide the board with a realistic estimate for each segment. Currently available data was entered, and then adjustments were made if I had additional information. Obviously, an estimating tool like that can't take into account every single variable that you're aware of. Now, it sounds like the board really likes grant funding. Who doesn't like grant funding? So let's talk about that for a second. Campo. Campo or any other grant agency, they're going to consider various criteria before awarding funds for this kind of project. So also included in the agenda packet was this super short summary to mention. Number two, accessibility connectivity. What are the points of interest involved? What are the connections made? What's the significance of that route? Three, demand density. What are the number of households and employees per square mile near the facility? In other words, how many people could or would use the facility? Four, cost estimates. You take the sum of the first three divided by the cost, and that's how they come up with cost estimates. Now currently, Campo offers funding for construction only. Their attitude is, if you believe in it, if it's worth it, you'll invest your money in the preliminary engineering and acquiring the easement, and then if it meets their criteria, they give the construction funding. So before we spend city funds on preliminary engineering and the easement, answering these following questions may help us determine which segments justify the cost. It could be demographics, like school sorority, or it could be, well, the people in this neighborhood would use it. How many would use it? So much an average delay traffic for a, you know, road use plan, if you're going to build a road, a wider road, you have to look at the projected traffic. If there's already a road there, you have some idea, if there's no road at all, it's a little more complicated, but there's still tools to, you know, estimate who would use it in the future. And then what would it be used for? That could be an important also, is it a destination? Are people walking to a school, shopping area? Or is it for exercise, recreation? Or does it connect neighborhoods? There's different reasons or different ways the thing can be used. And does inspection have unique challenges? Does it cost more per foot than average? Are there topography challenges? Cost or complexity of easements, utilities involved? So those are things that I believe should be considered when we select, you know, where to spend valuable resources. In conclusion, you see there's twelve options up there that have already been identified. Staff would appreciate direction and local prioritization of these segments, so we can focus planning efforts on fewer segments. Instead of being spread wide and thin, let's focus a little bit more in depth on the ones that are really needed and what is needed. And when a decision is made to begin design on a segment or segments, they will start the process of hiring a qualified engineering firm. Does the board have any questions for me at this time?
Before I start, excellent job. This breaks down. I think the board's got several things to look at here, one, to make sure that the proposed sidewalks cover the areas that they want covered, and also the priority of which ones they want to go first, second, third, and on down the list. So I will start with Commissioner Wilkins.
Carl, again, excellent job, appreciate you. The areas I looked at, number nine and number ten, that I would like to prioritize, it hit probably on just about every point you just mentioned, who, why, destination, neighborhood they would walk, because they're walking in the middle of the road now, I'd like to give them a sidewalk. So I would ask that the board consider number nine and number ten as the first two priorities, and I think Commissioner Kaczynski spoke many times about six and seven and eight, and Mayor Protemp's not here, she spoke many times about eleven. So you said four, if you could expand that a little bit to five, nine, ten, seven, eight, and eleven, in that order, a priority order, would be appreciated.
Thank you, sir. Carl, let me ask you real quick, on number nine, which is East Line Street from Main Street to Beverly Court, that gets us from Main Street down into the Pecan Hill subdivision, but does it spread out any in there? Do you understand what I'm asking? It gets us, it's kind of like going to the bottom of a hill, but it, does it spread out?
No, sir, I, the line that is shown on there, that's the extent of what I did, and I think when I took it too far, number eight, number eight, I chopped off the bottom section. I figured they'd go off through the subdivision to get to the normal exit of that and forth. But all the rest of the code that you drew, that's, that's in line with what I.
That's as far as it goes.
That could be certainly changes, that's what you mean.
Yeah, I, I just, if we're going to do this, which I highly support, I just want to make sure people aren't still walking in the road to get to the sidewalk.
When any of these goes into design, I'm sure there'll be refinements, more information will come in, and if we're thinking one side, it may be another side, or maybe some other, you know, fine tuning, but this is just the, at this point in time, is what we know.
Okay, so we're basically looking at now is this is information, at least I'd like for it to be information so that we have time to really look at it closely.
But you also asked us to prioritize it, so.
Yeah, but I'd like to have time to look at each one in order to archive it. What, Commissioner Kaczynski?
So, number seven and eight, eight, where it says Northside Road, isn't that still Elm Street there? It doesn't turn into Northside, and still it gets to Cash, doesn't it?
No. City limit stopped just before the neighborhood.
And that's where those road changes from Elm to Northside? So is that city street, or is that state?
That's DOT, past the city limit sign.
Okay, so, from Fillmore.
That first entrance.
Uh huh.
Fillmore Drive.
Yeah, that city.
Directly across the road.
Yeah, the big white one.
That's county. That's, that has a Northside.
Mailing address.
Mailing address.
All right, yeah. Well, the reason I'm asking about that is because seven and eight, at our town hall, the president of Davenport came to us and asked us for the sidewalk to be done there, and, and that, I told him I would work on it, and I like the fact that running the sidewalk from Fillmore all the way to Church Street, so, and it would accomplish the same, it would accomplish the same goal, so I'm really excited to see these two smaller sections in here instead of that one big long one. And I, I'm sure that you've added wood, I don't think we can do cement there.
That's why they cost for the pillars, for the tire now.
Yeah, so because Mr., is it McGrath? McGrath?
Yeah.
The Davenport president, Mr. McGrath, is that his name?
I know who that is.
Anyway, he came to the town hall and, and he specifically asked for that, to get some sort of a sidewalk from the Davenport subdivision to connect to somewhere.
At McKnight?
At McKnight, that's it. Something from the Davenport subdivision to get to.
Nine intended traditionally underserved in Creedmore.
Believe me, I am.
So do the board keep that in mind?
Very cognizant of that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gleason, any comments?
I just feel kind of left off, and I'm a little way over number twelve.
Furbow Street.
Well, you could look at it, it's, that's the most, that's the highest number.
Welcome to that dangerous Furbow Street, up to the, again, a lot of money, but a lot of, a lot of good ideas and a lot of effort went into this.
That's great performance.
I, I, again, I definitely think we should move forward and, and come up with some kind of a plan.
Yeah, we've got to start something.
Yeah.
Mr. Way.
Everything's been discussed.
And Commissioner Albright wants number, liked number eleven.
It was eleven.
Because she feels the people on Hillsborough Street are, are underserved like the people in Pecan.
Well, and that's what I'd like to do, we're very close to our next meeting anyway. Take this home, look at it, do your four priorities, and then we'll come back and discuss it, see if we can get a consensus on the board as to what the primary four concerns. Because I think we're close, but that way you get a chance to look and reconsider.
Maybe the city could discuss with the Golden Pond HOA, about a ball field, or it never could use as a ball field, but if they could put a nice splash pad in there, that sidewalk would come right down off the.
That's a private joke.
Robert would have to move.
Great decision.
Uh, city manager.
Mr. Mayor, the commission, a couple of weeks ago, it must have been, one or more of y'all mentioned we should apply for a grant that y'all saw, you sent to us, it was.
Harp over the sound.
Right, and there was two dead, two different grant applications, and there was one deadline of like July the tenth, which we, was no way to make. We, I reached out to Alan Steinback, and the second one was on August fourteenth timeline for Build America Bureau, U.S. Department of Transportation, where they had a, about a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant available that was not matching. Reached out to Alan to see if he could help us with that application process, because he currently has a contract with us and he still has a balance on it, but Alan was so tied up, he could not do it, but a person that he works very closely with, Allison Anilik with Mac Adams Company, volunteered to help out, so she gave us an estimated cost proposal of about twenty-three hundred and fifty bucks, which will come out of Alan's dollars, it's going to be funded through Alan's PSP company. So Mike and I, Frango's and I, Alan Steinback, and Allison met last Friday to talk through this August fourteenth deadline, if it was possible to make it. Obviously, there's too many projects for us to fund at one time, so the thought was to get the board's input on the top four, so we can use that information as some of the data in the application. Anna believes we've got a very strong chance at this. She believes the timeline is great, she can meet the August fourteen deadline with a submittal. So that's why we've come really tonight to get maybe the top four, so we can focus on the data involved with those in writing this grant up.
So you're saying we should make this decision now?
Well, if you could, we could go with the four that y'all have mentioned and talked about, and, and just submit, go with this grant.
Nine, ten.
Now, beyond this, I believe, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's another one point three billion dollars of grant money that's going to be following on, so once you get that door open and get this one approved, which you feel.
We'll get it all done.
And this lady's done this for DOT for eighteen years, she is a strong grant writer. And she gave us a lot of hope, and we're, we've got a couple hurdles to meet, which she has no hesitation in helping us get through those, and when the two o'clock window on the fourteenth opens, she wants us to be the first one in to make this submittal. So she's walking us through this process to submit this grant.
Mr. Mayor, would you consider doing the four now that I mentioned, nine, ten, seven, eight, to guide the city manager? A consensus from the board?
Well, I tell you what, let's do if we could, because I'd still like to pick out.
Time is of the essence.
I understand that. What I'd like to do is just give it some thought, and when we come back into open session after the closed session, we can make that determination.
Okay.
And like I said.
City manager, will that give you enough time?
Yes, sir, so I'm hearing seven, eight, nine, ten. Gives us a starting point, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, so just, like I said, I just don't want somebody to pop up later and go, you know, if I'd have thought about it a little more, I'd have gone this way or that way.
That's good.
All right, y'all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries four to zero. We are headed into closed session.